Thank you all for joining us this evening. I'd like to start the meeting out with a heartfelt apology to Mr. Delger, who was subjected to some pretty heinous comments from a member of our community at the last school board meeting. We work very hard to maintain an environment where all people are welcome to share their thoughts with us, but that was not the case during that meeting. Moving forward, if we do experience any sort of behavior like that, we will kindly ask the party involved to give up their chance at the microphone, and then after that, we will no longer welcome that at meetings. Those comments were grossly inappropriate, and I just hope that Mr. Delger understands how sorry we are that we weren't able to maintain an environment that he felt welcome at. So, moving on, we have a few celebrations. First up, we have Sandy Stilly. She's winning the District Teacher of the Year Award, and presenting that tonight is Ms. Lisa Allen. Just press it one time. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Hold it up. Each year administrators have the opportunity to nominate a teacher for the esteemed honor of Natrona County School District's Teacher of the Year. When this opportunity arose last year, it only took a moment for the administrative team to choose someone. There are many wonderful teachers in our building, but this year's honoree is a shining star, not only at Centennial, but in the educational field. Sandy's title is the 8th grade Language Arts Teacher, but she's so much more than that. Sandy plays an active role in school leadership, leading the Language Arts Department, serving the building leadership team, designing and implementing professional learning opportunities, and mentoring a new generation of teachers. Throughout her career, Sandy has been driven by a commitment to continuous improvement and growth, not only for her students, but also for herself, embracing new technologies and constantly reflecting in her practices. She is the epitome of what it is to be a lifelong learner, and she models that for her students and staff. Sandy is also dedicated in building relationships with students. This is apparent from the climate in her classroom. She cares about each student and devotes much of her time outside of school hours, helping them understand the content. She is readily available for her students and willing to do whatever it takes to help them be successful in class. She is an inspirational educator, and I have just been so pleased and honored to stand next to somebody of the caliber as Sandra Stilly. You'll also find her making quilts, making desserts, and serving her colleagues in very personal and kind ways, as well as students. It truly, she is exemplified integrity, and it's just truly an honor to present to the board and to everyone here tonight Natrona County Schools' Teacher of the Year, Sandra Stilly.
Thank you, Ms. Stilly. Congratulations. Next up, we have Mr. James Catlin, here to present Ms. Melanie Kelly with the Alpha Delta Kappa Excellence in Education Award.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chairman Cattlerre, Superintendent Jennings. I'm Jim Catlin, Principal Roosevelt High School. Tonight, I'm going to introduce to you a very special lady. You can relax, because she's already promised she's never going to retire. This special guest taught three years in North Dakota. She's coached for 15 years in this district, basketball, volleyball, and track. And she's been employed by the Natrona County School District for 32 years. I'm only 33, so she's been around a while. In 2009, she was named the Natrona County School District Teacher of the Year, as well as with the state runner-up for the Wyoming Teacher of the Year in 2009. This lady is the Secretary of the Local Chapter of Alpha Delta Kappa, an international honorary organization of women educators, empowering women educators to advance inclusion, educational excellence, altruism, and world understanding. I am proud to announce that Melanie Kelly is the 2022 State and Northwest Region's recipient of the Alpha Delta Kappa Excellence in Education Award. Next July, she will travel to Kansas City to find out whether she'll be the international award winner as well. I also would like to mention that she's the only person in our building who knows that at midnight on Sunday, we get a weird bell that happens there. Everybody else is sleeping, but she's still getting ready for the week. So either she has a time management problem, or she really, truly loves what she does. And she really, truly loves what she does, because she's never going to retire. So, and I just, it's such an honor to have somebody like this on your staff that is a true educational hero, or heroine, I guess the actual word would be. But she's just incredible. Teachers in our building just look up to her. Staff looked up to her. You saw the number of hugs she gets when she walks into any place. She feeds her kids. She gives them snacks. She inspires them day in and day out. So ladies and gentlemen, a true educational heroine, Melanie Kelly.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, and congratulations. And as usual, as we prepare to enter the public comment portion of our agenda, I'd like to remind everyone of our meeting norms. Please be respectful of each speaker. Audience outbursts make it difficult to speak and hold an effective meeting. We understand that many of you are passionate about your topics, but this is not a popularity contest, so please hold your applause. Public comment is limited to one comment per commenter, and the comment period is no longer than three minutes. Please respect those limits. If you have additional information for the board, please email us or give us a call. Please refrain from vulgar and foul language. And if a previous speaker has already discussed your speaking points, please consider allowing other speakers to come forward. At this time, we'd like to invite any persons wishing to address the board to come forward to the microphone. Just press the button one time until the light turns green and state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Ross Schriftman, 2200 Mariposa Boulevard, Casper. There is a national movement to place books in our school libraries with sexually explicit content. I went to the website of the American Library Association, ALA. In 2015, they created a strategic plan. It is filled with social policy advocacy on a number of issues, including sex issues. They also have a 34-page document called an Action Toolkit. It includes talking points for people to defend and promote these books. This may be familiar to you. Parents have the right to guide their children's reading, but parents should not be making decisions for other parents' children. Specifically, a small group of parents should not dictate what books other people's children are allowed to read. Public education is supposed to be a public good. Therefore, every citizen has a right and a responsibility to speak out when they see something that is wrong. Over the last several weeks, I've visited 1,800 homes in Casper campaigning for candidates. My discussions with the people, virtually all of them, are against this. Young people deserve to see themselves reflected in a library's book. I agree with that. But the least important aspect of an individual is what sexual activities they like to engage in. We are much more than our sexual activity, and I think that's important. The most disturbing part of the website is something called a challenge reporting. You can report people that disagree with having these books in the school libraries. I'm hoping that the American Library Association does not do what the National School Boards Association and report people to Merrick Garland, the Attorney General, and have the FBI investigate. In the last century, in Europe, there was a nation that a political party took over. It was a national socialist workers' party, the Nazis. I'm Jewish. They created indoctrination for children. They had people reporting children. I ask you, and I urge you, to take back your authority and protect the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schriftman.
Good evening. My name is Megan Degenfelder, 715 East Iverson Avenue in Laramie. Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, I appreciate the opportunity to address you all tonight. Again, my name is Megan Degenfelder, and I am the Republican nominee for State Superintendent of Public Instruction. I am also a former student and graduate of Natrona County School District, and my father sat on this very school board for several terms. Mrs. Kelly, in the back there, I was pleased to see her be awarded. She was a teacher of mine at CY Junior High, and indeed changed my life forever and is very much a reason of why I'm sitting here before you today. Today, I'm here to comment on the recent review of the library books Gender Queer and Trans Body/Trans Selves. I respect local decision-making, local control in all areas of government, and education is no exception. So I respect the duly-elected board that sits before me today and your authority over books and curriculum as is specified in our state constitution and state statute. The decision on books is entirely one up for a local school district, and I come to you tonight as a candidate for office responding to the needs and voices of voters across the state and within your community. As you're all aware, Gender Queer and Trans Bodies/Trans Selves includes graphic images of sexually explicit and arousing acts. Having reviewed these excerpts, such explicit images of any sexual orientation are not only beyond the scope of the content and performance standards of our sexual education and health standards, but they're not suitable for minors that are under the age of sexual consent and their inappropriate use of our taxpayer funds. Explicit and arousing sexual graphics are not the best and only way to support our LGBTQ students. There are many places for books such as Gender Queer and Trans Body/Trans Selves to exist as resources for adult individuals. But a K-12 public taxpayer library with minors is no such place. In your decision-making on this issue and the appeal, I urge you to consider these recommendations and also to take action as it relates to your policies and procedures, which it sounds like tonight you've already begun to discuss. So I appreciate that discussion. If elected in November, I do stand ready to work with you all, to work with all school districts across the state to navigate these difficult issues. I appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment tonight, and I appreciate all of your work on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Degenfelder. Press the button one more time. There you go.
My name is Cheryl Good, and I live at 3340 East 18th in Casper. I see board members that I started teaching with. I see students that were at school. I see Melanie that I taught with. I am a retired educator with over 40 years of service. I have definite opinions on the current issues, but that's not why I'm here. I respect the Natrona County School District Board for the time and commitment they freely give to our students. The board has in turn shown its respect for all speakers by scheduling time for offering input regarding the education students deserve. This board has also demonstrated its respect for its employees by providing guidelines for these employees as they work to fulfill the obligations of their jobs. Respect is further extended to the needs and rights of students in Natrona County School District as this board, its administrators, and employees struggle with the challenges of providing a quality education for a truly diverse group of young people. While I do not always agree with the decisions made by the school board and the administrative team, I respect those decisions and work to understand the information behind those needs and, as a result of those decisions. I do not in any way advocate the limiting of the rights of parents and citizens, but the recent lack of respect being shown to this school board and to the attendees at these school board meetings is very alarming to me. Public input is truly valuable as this school district strives to continually improve its programs and the education of our students. I encourage all who attend these meetings to repay the respect they have been shown by this board.
Thank you, Ms. Good.
Good evening. Cody Klein. I live in Bar Nun. I too had Mrs. Kelly as a teacher in 8th grade at CY. She was wonderful. I can tell you, I did not go into a career in English, but she was a very good English teacher, one of my favorites. I'm here again to talk about trades in the schools. I brought notes this time, so I don't miss anything. I'd like to start with some facts that you guys probably don't know about the trades. For every three baby boomers retiring from the trades, there's only one millennial or Gen X coming in. Wages in trades are up 15% to 20% in the last two years. An average skilled tradesman makes $54,000 to $67,000 a year. And I can tell you, at our company, if you're a lead man, you can make way more than that. A four-year college graduate averages $43,000 to $65,000 a year with an average cost of $140,000 for school. An avid tradesman's school costs about $35,000. If you learn in Wyoming, I can tell you, being a plumber costs you nothing to learn. You just have to put in the time and the effort. We did start an apprenticeship with Casper College last year. We have grants to pay for students to learn, but it's not just plumbing. It's electricians that most employers pay for their employees to learn. As you know, I'm a big advocate of pathways. I think the school district has a really golden opportunity to turn that into something that the rest of the state can model after. I'd really like to see that happen, and I am here to help you guys make that happen. And there's a lot of other industry people that are here to help you guys make that happen. We are on your side. We need your help to help you, because we are going to lose more and more tradespeople. There's going to be less and less people to build buildings and maintain buildings. And obviously, you can't have a wonderful facility like we do, whether it's Pathways, Natrona County, Kelly Walsh. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight was I heard last week that the Perkins Grant monies was overspent by $150,000. We have not gotten an invite to the Perkins Advisory Board meeting. I've been a part of that advisory board for three years, so I expect that to be happening soon. And I expect there to be a lot of transparency in that meeting. The other thing I want to do is challenge the board and the administration to sit down with your counselors and bring me to the table. I will bring as many peers and coworkers as I can to sit down and talk about the kids' options in trades instead of college. And I'm not saying don't go to college. By all means, go to college if you want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Is it on? It is. Hey there. My name is Jeanette Ward. I'm the Republican nominee in Wyoming's 57th House District and mom to two daughters who attend the Bosse's program in Natrona County High School. We have warned, requested, begged, and implored you to do the right thing by removing these sexually explicit books, Gender Queer and Trans Bodies/Trans Selves, from our public school library since last December. We have followed your process. But instead of being transparent as a publicly-elected body should be, this board has refused to take an up-and-down vote publicly on these matters. Instead, a committee chosen behind closed doors, unelected, and unaccountable to the people made a decision to keep these books in our schools. At any time, any one of the elected school board trustees could have made a motion to remove these explicit books that groomed children and called for an up-and-down vote. But that has not occurred. Why? To reiterate what I've said previously, we are not suggesting that Gender Queer and Trans Bodies/Trans Selves be banned. These books are available in the marketplace. We are asking that these books, which are pornographic according to the majority of reasonable people everywhere, but especially in Casper, be removed from our schools, never to be purchased again with our money. A decision is before you. To quote the band Rush, "If you choose not to decide, you have still made a choice." Choose the right. I'll leave you with this warning. "The cowardly, unbelieving, abominable murderers, sexually immoral sorcerers, idolaters, and all liars shall have their part in the lake, which burns with fire and brimstone, which is the second death." Notice that the cowardly are listed first.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Mary Schmidt, Casper. I just have some questions for you, the Board of Trustees, and I hope that in your comments that you can answer these questions. Did you know that last Thursday, on October 20th, Moms for Liberty gave a verbal appeal to the reconsideration committee on their decision? Did you know that this past weekend, the Casper Star Tribune ran a story that a student at Natrona County High School received a copy of Gender Queer from the library? Also, on February 11th of 2022, I submitted a FOIA request for KW and NC's circulation information on Gender Queer. I was only given KW's information. NC said they did not have the book. Are you aware that we were notified of the reconsideration committee's first meeting at 8:15 a.m. the day of the meeting? That the initial meeting contained several community members in the audience? And do you know that I issued a FOIA on October 4th to Mr. Wilcox regarding the information that was not given in the published reconsideration committee decision? On the 15th of October, I received a package and letter from your attorney. He stated that he would not give me the information I requested because of an unsubstantiated claim of retaliation and that the committee did not make any written record of their deliberations. On the 20th of October, I emailed your attorney asking for clarification on his previous email. I was instructed to turn it to my attorney. Why must I get an attorney for this process? Are you going to bring the committee before you to find out their reasonings for their decision? Are you going to ask for the actual printed copies from the school library to review? Are you, as trustees, going to determine how this review process will go? Or will you let the superintendent direct the process for you? I'm sorry to say, but the trust has been broken based off of the FOIA denials and the dishonest reporting of the circulation numbers on the book.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Good evening. Bernie Studer from Casper. Thanks to everybody that came tonight. Thank you, trustees, and Mr. Chairman. I'm going to say that the two books that have already been mentioned, I am against those, and it's not because of the subject matter, but the content. And I'm not going to repeat that stuff, but these brave ladies that did, that's amazing. And if the books are more of a health concern to the kids that are interested in those or whoever reads that, I would be more for them. And the other thing I don't like about it is I found out that the librarian was allowed to get this book in without any approval from anybody else. It seems like that we're trying to guard the front door while the back door and the side windows are wide open. I don't want to focus on that. And I don't want the, if you're into that, don't focus on it, because you're not that, whatever it is you do, 24/7. I'm trying to get kids to focus and get us to focus on kids getting to focus on their careers. There's two tremendous opportunities available right now. LiCycle out of Toronto has built three or four plants in the United States, and they recycle the car batteries that everybody wants in the electric vehicle setup. Disclosure, I own stock in LiCycle. I think it's a wave of the future, at least for five or 10 years. Full disclosure, almost everything, everybody in here buys, I probably own something of it. The other thing that's an engineering quandary is the power grid, and we need engineers really bad on this. It takes 1.5 kilowatts to charge a Tesla for one hour of drive time. At that rate, we need nine times the current electrical capacity. And even if all the cars did get changed to electric vehicle status, it wouldn't help at our current state. The ACT scores, the high score is 36. Nation was 20.3. Wyoming's at 19.8, but the Wyoming Department of Education thinks that's great. That is less than 56.3. That's failing. NAEP scores came out today, and these are tests for 4th and 8th graders. They're way down. We've got to stop focusing on this stuff. I'd grieve Debbie on this. We've got more important things to do. Safety and the two recent NC incidents, I want to ask everybody the question, what's the undercurrent causing all this? We've got to take advantage of gaming skills of these kids. They're the true first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Studer.
Is this on? Do I need to?
You're good to go.
Okay. My name is Carol Chapin. I'm a Natrona County resident out of a taxpayer, and I'm a real concerned citizen. Over the last few weeks, I've been trying to find out what is going on in our schools, libraries. I talked to teachers. They said to me, "There's no books. They would never order those kind of books." I find out, I write to you, Mr. Chairman, and you said that there were only two books, and they were single copies, and they were in two. They were both on KW. Since then, I, so I looked up some information about one book, because the other book was already spoken about last time, which was Gender Queer, I mean, excuse me, Transgender, Transself. So I decided that I would try to look at what's going on with Gender Queer. I had some people. I asked some of my friends if they could find the visuals on this. And I had a hard, they had a hard time doing it, because they tried to send it to me through Meta, which is the overseer on my Facebook account. And of course, I wouldn't accept it if it wasn't. But I finally found the pictures last night, and I showed them to my husband, and he turned around in disgust. He said, "I want to see that." And it's hard for me to talk about this to you, but federal law defines child pornography as any visual depiction of sexually explicit conduct. Imagine, images of child pornography are also referred to as child sex abuse images. The fact that this is in a comic book format is even worse. It makes it more attractive to children to look at. In this picture, the author of the book describes her visual, that this is visual picturing. She writes that she read lesbian porn and gay porn at the age of 10, and that's how she decided how she would, what gender she would become. She says in this book that porn is universal in self-discovery. She says in this book that porn is universal in self-discovery. I also read in the newspaper just the other day that this is not just in KW library anymore. I guess there are other books besides that. Last night, I had a nightmare from these images.
Ms. Chapin, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the microphone working?
It is.
All right. Hello, my name is Sammy Saunders. I'm a junior at Kelly Walsh High School, and today I brought the books and questions with me. So if anyone's wondering where the Kelly Walsh copies are, they're with me right now. So I would like to address that these books are not porn. For one, Trans Bodies Trans Selves is a health guide. It's a health guide specifically for the transgender community. And you know what? This book is over 600 pages long, and I bet you only just a small portion of it is dedicated to sexual education. I don't see why it's such a horrible thing to include sexual education in a health guide book. Because especially for us LGBTQ+ teens, it can be a lot harder to find out how stuff works for us. It's a lot different than the SISHT normativity. So that's my first thing. And then moving on to Gender Queer. I've seen a lot of complaints that the book is filled with pornography, which is simply not true. The pictures in the book are not to show children porn. They're about Maya's path to finding out who they are. In fact, I have quotes in the book to prove what the book is truly about. I wonder if any of these kids are trans or non-binary, but don't have words for it yet. How many of them have never seen a non-binary adult? Is my silence actually a disservice to all of them? And having a non-binary or trans teacher in junior high would have meant the world to me. It is extremely important to include these self-discovery books in our libraries and our health guide books, because it lets other children know that they are not a taboo. And if we treat it as a taboo, they will start to believe that their identity is a taboo, and that they should not exist.
Thank you, Sammy. Please hold your applause.
Good evening, school board trustees. My name is August Schneider. I live in Casper, and I go to NC. I'd like to start by thanking you all for everything you've done for us so far. I've read Gender Queer, and I personally relate to a lot of the struggles that were addressed. I've read the section out of Trans Bodies Trans Selves, and it's purely informational. It's also only a few pages out of a 600-page textbook, as said before. These books are not pornography. In fact, it's very important that kids today learn about these things, because staying closeted or being unhappy with your assigned gender at birth can be harmful to said person's mental health. Sadly, transgender adolescents are at higher risk for suicidality than cisgender adolescents. No parent that I can think of wants to see their child go through that, especially knowing that their kid might have wanted or needed to talk about it and not had a safe space to do it. I know a lot of people personally who are part of the LGBT community, and their parents are not supportive. I know secondhand that this can be very damaging to a person's mental health. If kids are reading these books, it's something they've been searching out. No one just comes across them. I didn't even know they existed until all of this came up. There's easy ways to prevent your kids from checking these out, so please don't take away the experience of reading them from kids who might need it. Don't take it away from kids who need a way to figure out who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, August.
Hello. My name is Tanis Loverchek Saunders, and I come to speak to you again, both in gratitude that thus far you have kept these books in the library, and also to beg the community as a whole for transparency. And what I mean by that is that I listened, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I listened to speaker after speaker say that this wasn't about LGBTQ youth being recognized, validated, and treated as equals, but that it was an issue about worrying about sexual content. That is based on small sections of a 600- and 300-page book, books, excuse me. I challenge anyone to find a 300- to 600-page book that doesn't have something in it that's objectionable. You cannot cherry pick passages to judge an entire book on. What about other books? I have looked at other books that are available in the libraries that are as or more sexually explicit in sections. I came to this meeting fully prepared to read sections of the Bible that are. And I don't hear anybody arguing for it not to be in libraries. If the people who really have objections based on sexual content in these texts, really, if that's the true reason they want them out, then there are going to have to be a whole lot more books that are removed from our libraries. And we don't want to do that, because we need access to all different kinds of views. And children of all backgrounds need to be accepted. I read both of those books before coming here tonight, because I felt that if I argued in favor of them, well, I best have read them, not just parts that I could look up to say, "Okay, show me where the pornography is." The lady two people before me mentioned a passage where the girl in the comic explores pornography, and she was entirely right. Those depictions are there. But if you go to the next page, what she says is that "I found out what I learned on the internet was wrong," and that the pornography that youth are exposed to is actually damaging, and it is based on a fantasy, not reality. And I found out that that is not where I should go for my knowledge. That part of the book is never mentioned, and I think that's a really, really important lesson for our kids to read. But you have to go beyond what can be easily looked up. I could easily read the Book of Solomon to you from the Bible. You would have a hard time finding something more explicit, but that is not what the entire book is about. Neither is that what Gender Queer is about. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Loverchek Saunders.
Hi.
One more time. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kate Schneider. I live in Casper. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here and share our opinions with you. I am a mother of three children. One graduated from NC, one currently at NC, and one at Dean Morgan. I'm a licensed professional counselor, currently in private practice. I have previously worked in the school district, and most recently worked in the school district as a substitute teacher. As was noted, well, I'm just going to read. I wrote down my thoughts. I tend to leave long voicemails and get pretty verbose, so I need to focus. But I thought it was interesting, as noted with the awards given earlier tonight to two very deserving teachers. Teachers and staff in our district help students in so many, many ways. The idea that students can only, or should only, learn academics in schools is unrealistic. All of us have learned from social interactions, school system, power dynamics, peer relationships. School is another, hopefully, safe place for youth to learn about life. For some, it is their only safe place. We are all here because of heightened emotions, and interestingly, the emotions on all sides are all the same. Fear, anger, probably disgust, bewilderment, sadness. Through these feelings, some arrive at the need to dismiss and banish. As human beings, it can be easy to develop fear and anxiety around the things that we don't know or understand. The idea that if we don't know, if we don't talk about it or read about it, it somehow just doesn't exist. Others, through these feelings, understand the needs to foster acceptance, empathy, and appreciation for others. We know books can provide connection and representation. Banning books stunts curiosity about self and others, even if some themes and words may be outside of comfort zones. Banning these books would ostracize students, who, like all of us, need to feel like they belong. The argument that it's about pornography and not LGBTQ people is clearly not true, as I've listened and been at these meetings. Queer sexuality is often labeled pornography, and sexuality and gender identities are two different things. These books are clean, concise, honest, and helpful. So to step back, to help myself step back from the emotions, which admittedly is rather hard to do, I looked up the definition of pornography. "Printed or visual material containing the explicit description or display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings." Gender Queer and Trans Lives and Trans Selves do contain explicit words and pictures, but their intention, the journey from adolescence to adulthood...
Ms. Schneider, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Amy Lloyd, Casper. You guys know that. So Mary mentioned earlier about the Casper Star Tribune article that was released yesterday morning. In that article, we found out that we have been lied to. I'm not saying you, as the board, have lied to us. People in the district have lied to us about availability of certain books, contested books. Now, I'm not going to go off about what these books contain. What I'm going to, what I want to talk about is the fact that we are lied to. I teach my children not to lie. When people lie, they lose respect, they lose credibility. And so therefore, you have people within the district that are continuing to lie to our children, no matter how old they are, from K on up to 12. They should not be in the school district if they're going to lie. I know this is just one book that was not listed in the database, but it makes one wonder how many other books are in this black market library that kids can just go up and ask for, and they'll just be given with no record, no accountability to the librarian that gives it to them. I mean, maybe, maybe there's a call for a full materials audit, where we need to check the list and the materials that are being held within our school libraries. Just a thought. When we have these material secrets, this can also open the door to the curriculum. Our curriculum is very broad and can be open for teachers to teach out of certain different textbooks that they want to teach from instead of, you know, ones that maybe their coworker at another school can teach from. But this also leads to things that maybe shouldn't be taught. You know, we've all been told that the 1619 Project is not in the curriculum. But because of all the secrecy and openness of the curriculum, the 1619 Project can be taught to students, and it won't, nobody will know about it, because it's not in the books. Also, substitute teachers can come in and speak about, you know, teach things like Marxism and communism, and how capitalism is bad. Right? Those are just my thoughts. I really hope you look into how we can be more transparent. You've asked us to follow the procedures. We've done that. And what we've gotten in return is we've been lied to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Good evening, everyone. Let's lighten up the mood a bit. I got a story time. I brought the book too. Let's see what we can find. Let's see here. Hold on. It's here. Where did it go? Oh, that's right. It's sex workers. We're going to learn about sex workers, because we think so high of our transgender students that we want to make sure they're safe being a sex worker. What do you guys think of that? Is that what we think, the dignity of transgender students? That we have to teach them that, how to circumvent the law enforcement, to take phone calls in their homes, to do sex work? I think more highly of our transgender students. I really do. I think all our children have dignity, all of our students, gay, trans, whatever it is. This book has sex workers in it, and it teaches you all on how to do it. It even tells you to do it in your home, or maybe go to a motel. Because that's the focus of this book, is about transgender people, and that they have a hard time finding jobs. And sometimes they have to turn to sex work. That's what this 700 or 600-page work does. Yeah, this is what it's about. It's not about our students, because if we thought they had dignity, we don't have these books in the school. If they have dignity, we would teach them how to read and write, and how to find good jobs, not to lower themselves to trans, I mean, to sex work. Is this what we're promoting in Natrona County High School? Or, you know, the county? So anyways, that's my story time to you. You know what? Read the book, all of you, because this is degrading to all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins.
Hi, it's Archie Petrie, Casper, Wyoming. I'm actually going to try and see if I can address a couple of little things that are all related to this. I think you guys are all well aware where I stand on the books. The thing I have noticed, and I'm trying to offer a solution of sorts, is that, one, a lot of the parents, a lot of the public that are coming up here, what I'm hearing a lot of is fear and shock and uncertainty, and totally, totally understand that. If you have grown up in Wyoming or anywhere, and you have never had exposure to trans youth or trans identity, or the issues related to trans youth and trans identity, I'll be honest, people writing to trans that are trans or in the community are pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of subtlety and pretty flowers to it. It's a pretty brutal existence. But I think that that can be very shocking to people who aren't of a sensibility of understanding that. So to that solution, I am a counselor here in Casper. I have extensive training on teaching families about trans issues and about gender issues. I totally will get in touch with you later. I'm willing to offer free workshops. I'm willing to offer informational, not pro or against, just basic community information, because I see some people that are, the things they're stating, while true, show that they lack a certain level of experience and exposure to this. And I think that that's something we can do to help. Second of all, I've heard the argument like 40 times in the last three weeks that no one wants their taxpayer money going. I will write you a check to reimburse for the cost of the books at like every school if you need. If that's what a concern is, if that will stop that argument, I, in my practice, will write a check to take that argument off the table. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Hey, guys. Darcy Gudger, Mills. So, yeah, as Mr. Petrie said, there is a lot of brutality to students who suffer from the mental illness of gender dysphoria. I've been doing a lot of research. I do have a master's in education. I care a lot about students. I've worked with a lot of students over the years. And one of the things I found in my research today, there's a longitudinal study that comes out of Sweden. It's a 30-year study on people with gender dysphoria. And the trend is 10 to 15 years after surgeries and chemical alterations, people who transition are 20 times more likely to commit suicide. Is this something that we really want to push our kids into? It's fine if adults make these decisions. It should be for adults, not children. Another thing that I found... Another thing that I found in the DSM-5 is that if children are allowed to just be kids, because I mean, kids want to identify as a lot of things. Some want to be Spider-Man, some want to be snake lizards, some want to be the opposite gender. But if you allow children to just be children and not foist sexual content on them, the DSM-5 states that 98% of boys and 88% of girls will default back to their birth sex. I mean, there are only two sexes, there's male and female. I mean, you dig a body up in 20 years, they're gonna do a DNA test and it's either going to be XX or XY. But again, here's my other question. Why sexual content? Okay? That's the other thing we need to ask ourselves. What is it about identifying yourself with what you do with your nether regions, if you will? Why can't people identify based on their gifts and talents? Like somebody is a singer, somebody is an athlete, somebody is great with animals. Why, why are we putting so much emphasis on sex? Why is there such a drive? Why are these people so intent on sexual content for children? That's something we have to keep asking. It has been shown in studies that children exposed to sexual content are traumatized. Do you guys want to be part of that? Or do you want to be part of enabling kids to become the best of who they are with their gifts and talents and have nothing to do with sexualization? Let's leave sexualization out of the schools. That's with their parents. If kids really want to explore the gay and trans, they can go to Casper Pride and talk to those people, but it doesn't have a place in our schools. Our schools are about education. Neutona County, you're doing a good job. We could do better. I mean, everybody could do better. So let's just focus on education.
Thank you, Ms. Gudger.
Hi there, my name is Caroline Kirsch. I'm a local family medicine physician. And I was going to give a different talk tonight, I had papers. But first off, I'd just like to say that none of the data presented by the last speaker was in any way accurate. I can provide actual data done by medical researchers that is accurate, that refutes all of those points that, that were made. I also don't think that sexuality and gender identity are the same thing. And there's also data to show that. There are many people who may identify as a trans masculine individual, who are attracted to men and consider themselves to be gay. Others who are attracted to women and consider themselves to be straight. So it has nothing to do with sexuality, it has to do with gender identity. The other thing I would say is there, the notion that there are only two sexes is also blatantly false. There are a number of individuals who are born with what is called intersex. They may have different genitalia, they're, they may have XXY chromosomes, they may have XY chromosomes and female genitalia. And this, the prevalence of this is the same as the prevalence of redheads. So if you would keep that in mind, that there are, there are, there is a variety, not only in how people identify, but actual physical genitalia, which seems to be a topic that, that is dwelt, being dwelt on a lot here. Again, I am happy to provide the board with any of the information. I have been studying this extensively over the last few years and have probably hundreds of articles that I can share with you that give the actual statistics on this. I just want to thank you for listening to all of us tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Kirsch. All right. Well, it doesn't look like we have anyone else, so we'll move into the approval of the general session minutes of October 10th, 2022. Without objection, the minutes of the general session of October 10th, 2022 will be approved. Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Without objection, the minutes of the executive session of October 10th, 2022 will be approved. Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Superintendent Jennings, consent agenda items.
Chair Catalier, trustees, there are two items on your consent agenda this evening. There's a certified and classified personnel report, district bills dated October 7, 2022, and October 14th of 2022.
Thank you, Superintendent Jennings. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? By trustee Walsh, do we have a second? Trustee Alvey, any further discussion? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. Any opposed, same sign. The motion is approved. Tonight, we do not have any reports and recommendations, so we'll move to item G, other business, and that is trustee comments. Trustee Smith, we'll start with you this evening.
Again, I would like to thank everybody who came out tonight to voice their opinion. I, I definitely hear you. I'm listening to everybody on all sides, and I am taking all of it into consideration, so I just want you all to know that. I wanted to address a couple of the things that I heard during public comment tonight. So first of all, there was an allegation or an understanding that the way that the reconsideration committee handled the request for the removal of the books was not transparent. And I do want to give a little bit of background on how this, how the process works, hopefully to clear up any misunderstandings. So within administrative regulation, there is a specific order in which requests like this are handled. And this request was handled in line with that administrative regulation. It is 6232. So the reason that it was handled by a committee that was appointed by the superintendent is because that's how the regulation requires it to be done. But because when a request like this is received, first of all, it's going to go through staff and administration before it comes to the board. So it goes through them. The superintendent then put together that committee as required by the administrative regulation. The board didn't have a hand in that. We did not directly oversee that committee. It was handled at the operational level by the superintendent and administration. And to the comment that the findings of the committee were not transparent or it was not done in a transparent manner, I do want to just say that a report was released that detailed the reasoning behind the decision that the committee made. However, that committee is not an elected board. And so, of course, they aren't going to handle that request or their, their decision-making in the same way that the elected school board would. So on receiving an appeal, the board will review the decision of the committee. And that is where it will come to us, and hopefully, we will be making a decision in a, in a very transparent manner. So I just want to say that that's something that I will be advocating for very strongly. I know that this is an issue that is important to many members of the community. And I think that it's important that we, as trustees, handle it as transparently and openly as possible so that you can understand how it is that we come to the decision that we do. But just wanted to, to sort of address those things because there, there is a process that has to be followed, and we are following that process. So I understand that there maybe is some frustration there, but as we get through to the end of this process, I'm hoping that there will be more openness and hopefully as well, people will be satisfied with the, the decision that we come to and the result at the end of all of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Trustee Walsh.
Thank you. And thanks to trustee Smith for clarifying the, the committee that reviewed the books, because that was a process, and that's how it is done. And now we have received an appeal. So I think another comment that was made, that we hadn't made a vote. So now, after that, we have received the appeal. We will review the committee's recommendation, and the board will make a public vote. And I believe that will be done by the end of November. Other questions that were asked? The comment that, that you were all lied to, and, and that upsets us that, that that book wasn't in. It's not, we tried to be very transparent. It was news to us. And so that has been brought forward to the administration and addressed, and will be taken care of so that hopefully those things don't happen again. So I think probably we've answered some of the questions that you brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Walsh. Trustee Applegate.
So my comments are going to be fairly extensive tonight. Thank you all for attending and for sharing your comments over the last few months. Public input is critical. It's critically important to publicly elected boards. As noted, an appeal has been filed last week, and now per our regulations, we are required to make a decision. The request to remove two books from our high school libraries raises a series of questions, all of which have been raised by the public. I would like to put forward tonight a possible framework for answering some of those questions. But before I get to that, I want to address a few items. First, I believe the reconsideration committee came to a decision consistent with existing board policy, and I thank them for their work. Second, the school board and school district is not capable of solving the political and medical controversies that are occurring in the United States regarding transgender children. Some commenters from both sides of this book issue have occasionally tried to make that their focus, but the general content of these books has no bearing on the thoughts I will put forth this evening as it relates to these books and library materials in general. I also want to speak directly to the LGBTQ community in saying that I thought the comments from this community and its supporters have been thoughtful and respectful. It takes bravery for these students to provide public comment to this board. I want to emphasize to them that this board sees their humanity. Your humanity is our common ground, and differences in personal identity does not influence how I see you as a fellow human being. The LGBTQ community has historically, and it still occurs today, been stigmatized, marginalized, bullied, and harmed. And I heard the emotion when you expressed your thoughts regarding these books. Mental health counselors also provided compelling testimony when they discussed suicide rates and safety issues related to transgender children. I think we should all recognize this risk and be highly sensitive to it. I also appreciate the thoughtful comments from parents expressing concerns about their children being exposed to sexually explicit images and content at the high school libraries. Parents have a right to know what their children learn at school, and they have a fundamental right to limit or prevent their children from being exposed to mature subject matter that they may not, that they believe may not be appropriate for their children. I think there's been general agreement on this assertion, but perhaps differing, differing views on how it is achieved. My intent tonight, the underlying purpose behind, behind my recommendations on a framework for evaluating this appeal is to protect and defend this institution of public education that I care so deeply about. And perhaps it should be said out loud that we find ourselves in an impassioned debate on competing rights. On one side is parental control over raising their children and the associated influences they advocate to have over their public schools. On the other side of this issue is the argument for First Amendment rights of publication and dissemination of controversial materials. Now, on to the questions I think this board needs to contemplate as we discuss the appeal over the next month. What is the appropriate age or maturity level for these books? What controls should parents have in restricting access for their children to sexually or violently explicit images or content in a public high school library? Should the school district be providing materials that have sexually or violently explicit images or highly sexualized content in high school libraries? What level of transparency should we have in our libraries? And how should this transparency be achieved? As we proceed to answer the first question, I suggest we consider that rating systems are in place for graphic novels or what some might think of as comic books. There is not a consistent rating system for graphic novels, but many book publishers have chosen to use a system devised by DC Comics, introduced in 2011. There's obviously been a proliferation of graphic novels over the last two decades, and I believe the DC Comic rating framework could be something we could consider adding in regard to our existing policy and regulations on controversial issues. In the DC Comic rating system, teen plus or 15 plus has the following description. "Appropriate for readers 15 and older, may contain moderate violence, mild profanity, graphic imagery and/or suggestive themes." The mature or 17-plus rating is as follows. "Appropriate for readers age 17 and older, may contain intense violence, intensive profanity, nudity, sexual themes, and other content suitable for older readers." This 17-plus rating is functionally equivalent to R-rated imagery in the movie industry. It's worth noting that the Neutona County School District does not allow R-rated movies to be shown in school without parental consent, nor do we allow R-rated movies to be freely accessed in our libraries according to a discussion I had with Kelly Walsh, librarian. Answer questions two and three. I am interested in better understanding the extent of R-rated imagery currently available in our high school libraries, which I believe could be in the form of graphic novels, movies, and perhaps a limited number of books with images. So we can better understand the broader implications of decisions regarding sexually and violently explicit imagery within our high school libraries. In other words, the appeal on the two books in question should be considered in the context of this broader question related to explicit R-rated imagery within our libraries. Although I emphasize that this is not the only criteria we should examine in a policy review. As a second example, although our librarians have said erotica is not purchased, we do not have a definition of this term in our current policy or a defined process of how this criteria is applied. As to question four, what level of transparency should we have for district libraries? And how should this transparency be achieved? This question I am prepared to answer tonight, from my perspective at least. What books do your students read in class? What is available for them to read in the library? I believe this broader review and reflection about the type of books, graphic novels, and movies in our libraries leads to questions on transparency and the general range of materials available to students in our Neutona County District Libraries. I support transparency. I know this board and the superintendent embrace transparency. I have confidence that our librarians have done a good job in representing the range of opinions and purchased valuable and important books for our students. The school district is open to inquiry and scrutiny, and the sun should, should shine on our curriculum, our policies, and the books and other materials we buy for our libraries. My policy recommendation for this board and superintendent on question four, the district should implement a process such that all books and movies in each of our libraries are listed and available to the public for review. Transparency is a healthy practice for all public institutions. Each year, the district should update what books and other materials have been removed and added to the library. The citizens in Neutona County have a right to know what materials are being made available to students in our high school libraries. In alignment with Board Policy 6233, quote, "It is believed that impartial study and discussion should prevail, and that on any given controversial subject, balance and appropriate viewpoints are to be presented," end of quote. Materials with imagery rated as 17-plus, if maintained going forward, should be clearly indicated in this annual reporting. In closing, and I know this has been lengthy, but these are my first words on this appeal. I remain open to ongoing discussion as we refine and answer the questions I have outlined.
Thank you, trustee Applegate. Trustee McCullar.
Thanks for your deep thoughts, trustee Applegate. Room to think about. Congratulations, Mel Kelly. I know that ADK Sisters are really, really proud of you. And Regent means she won out of like eight states, are there in our, six states? Yeah, a lot. So they got the best one. Megan, thank you for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts as well.
Thank you, trustee McCullar. Trustee Alvey. Thank you, trustee Alvey. Trustee Miler.
Thank you, trustee Applegate, for your thoughts. I agree that there are some holes in our policies, and hopefully we'll be able to update them and take care of the situation. And I look forward to the long hours, many hours of discussion we will have in order to work with this appeal. And Mr. Stewart, to hopefully address some of your comments. I know you mentioned a little bit about the NAPSCORS that came out today. And yes, they declined, and that's going to happen when there's a global pandemic. Many people are forced to wear masks, or what may or may not be, or being out of school, which now we can understand the importance of attendance. Being in school is important. And thanks to custodial crews, our administration, staff, teachers, for working hard and diligent to make it possible to keep our kids in school. teachers for working hard and diligent to make it possible to keep our kids in school, that if you look at our scores, we're actually among top three, top four, in the fourth and eighth grade reading and math levels. So it's a great thing to see. Well done.
Thank you, trustee Miler. Trustee Jensen.
So congratulations to Sandy Stili and Melanie Kelly. That's nice to have a celebration. I appreciate Yana's comments and Dave's comments. I think they both gave some perspective that it'd be nice if the public understood the process, because we've been, the administration has been accused of lying and being deceptive, and I think that's not fair. The process is happening. It's slower than we want. I look forward to having the discussion with my fellow trustees about these two books and about the policies. I think that's a good discussion. And we have those books. I have read Gender Queer. I have dabbled in the other one. I find it to be extremely difficult to read, just because it's so repetitive. But we're gonna have that discussion, and we hear your voices. And so my thoughts, I'm not going to share on that issue tonight. That opportunity will happen. We'll have an opportunity with trustees to discuss this issue between ourselves and have an honest discussion and talk about the balance between censorship and freedom and all of that. So we're gonna have that opportunity, and at that point, we'll be able to express, be more transparent. And so I'm holding back from having that statement of my beliefs on these two books at this point, but that'll happen pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jensen. I'd also like to thank Sandy Stili and Melanie Kelly for coming, and congratulations. Those are both amazing awards, and I think you're both amazing teachers. I think Ms. Kelly, my wife, would agree that you are quite the pillar of the community. So thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming and sharing your comments with us tonight. I'd like to thank all of the district staff, especially Mr. Flett, for your in-depth explanation on the budget process and getting to drink through a fire hose and be able to then turn around and explain that to everyone. It's a testament to your knowledge, so thank you very much. Mr. Klein and Mr. Glasgow and all the other tradesmen and electricians, plumbers, engineers that you came. I'm keenly aware of the effect that you all have and the lack of effective tradespeople, or just tradespeople in general. So I'm very hopeful that, I'm not just hopeful, but I know that the district's going to turn pick into something that can do what we all want it to do and start to get some people into the community that can work in these jobs. And thank you for coming. And I imagine in the next three or four weeks, we'll hopefully be able to sit down and have a meaningful discussion with all of you. And with that, superintendent Jennings.
So trustees, and I'm looking at Melanie Kelly, because she's still sitting there. We were colleagues, I'm looking at her thirty years ago, colleagues at CY Middle School on an eighth-grade core team. I was the chemistry/physics teacher, Melanie was teaching ELA. What an incredible team. I still remember our kids that we had way back then. CY was the first team, and Casper, probably in Wyoming, I'm guessing. We were one of the first core teams as far as interdisciplinary teams working with students, and then that took off into the middle schools concept that is around the district as far as exploratories and a variety of different things. So congratulations, Melanie, on that award. As trustees heard tonight, an appeal was received on Thursday for the two books. We've been working to get you those copies going forward. The reconsideration process was first originally, the administrative regulation was written in nineteen eighty-two. We did some revised work to it most recently. But in that process, they were really working to be compliant with a Supreme Court decision around the PICO. And Mr. Silva could go a lot deeper and can go a lot deeper into what that decision was. But what it was is really to create a process. Some of the appellate courts said, yep, you board trustees right away, you can just pull the books. And others said the superintendent could pull the books, and then it came down saying, no, that's not accurate, you need to have a process. So we have a process. We followed that process very intentionally. And so the committee-written documentation was given on October fourth, and then we did receive the appeal on the twentieth, and now that puts it in your lap as trustees as far as the review of the books and determining whether or not they stay with the Neptuna County School District. Trustees, on the fourteenth, we're gonna have our public hearing. That will also be published in the paper regarding the charter school for the hearing. We'll be hearing from Neptuna Preparatory Academy as a potential charter school within Neptuna County. That's coming up. And then trustee Miler, you specifically mentioned NAEP. We just received the NAEP results today. When you look at Wyoming, Wyoming scores in the top, probably three or four school states as far as the results. We've not had a chance to do a deep dive. It does not go down to the district level. Dr. Gilbar looked at me smiling. It doesn't go to the district level. But when you think of Wyoming, there's ninety-two thousand students, in approximately ninety-two thousand students in the state. We have twelve thousand seven hundred of those students. We have a large portion of Neptuna County students in those grade levels who do participate in NAEP, and they have back since I was teaching with Melanie on that. So we are represented within that sample, and the NAEP scores were very positive. They did go down at the national level. The state dipped a little bit, but overall, Wyoming fares very well compared to the other states. It's really the only comparable measure you have with the other states, because that's the only assessment that is uniform across the states. So I'm looking forward to delve into those and do a report out for that. And then the last one is a little bit of rumor control, and I normally don't do that, but it's been, I've received an email today, and it was asked earlier in one of our board budgets regarding CDC and the COVID-19 vaccine. So state statute's very clear. They established the immunization for the state of Wyoming, and we have to abide by that as a district. COVID-19 is not, let me repeat, not one of the vaccines that's the required immunization for the students that attend public schools in Wyoming. Our district's not implementing a COVID-19 vaccine requirement for students, nor do we have any indication that the state of Wyoming is going to pick that up as well. But we sent some information out in parent news to the parents, because that's something that came out from the CDC. But we just wanted to reassure our community and inform trustees as well that COVID-19 vaccine is not part of the immunization requirements of the state of Wyoming. So those are the comments I have for tonight. Thank you for all of your hard work. November fourteenth, 2022, at seven PM in this facility is your next board of trustees meeting.
Thank you, superintendent Jennings. This meeting is adjourned.